Ladies and gentlemen, I welcome you to study session six. And the title of this study session is logical operators in connectives and truth tables. Now, in the previous study session, you were exposed to the various logical operators and connectives. You recall that a distinction was also established between a logical operator and a connective. This study session introduces you to the relationship between logical operators in connectives and truth tables. Truth tables provides the conditions under which logical operators and connectives could be considered as true or false. Thus, this study session shall focus on the concept of truth table and the steps involved in the construction of truth tables. It is expected that at the end of this session, you should be able to define the concept of truth table, identify at least three steps in the construction of a truth table, give at least one rule for assigning truth tables for each logical operator or connective, then construct at least five truth tables involving the various logical operators in the connectives. Now, what is truth table? We are looking at the meaning of truth table. A truth table is a graphic representation of an operator and its definition in terms of its truth value. Remember, we said when we talk about truth value, we are talking about the situation where a particular proposition is considered as either true or false. The truth table displays the conditions under which a statement from a logical operator is to be regarded as true and the condition under which it needs to be regarded as false. Now, we are looking at the construction of truth tables. The construction of truth tables is important for a better understanding of rules involving the truth values of the logical constant operators we have already studied. In a truth table, you will see a string of Ts and Fs running horizontally across the page. This is what is called the rule of the truth table. You know, those horizontal lines, the Ts and Fs that you see run across the page horizontally, call them as the rule of the truth table. Now, the string of Ts and Fs running vertically, vertically down the page, we call that string the column of the truth table. So, I've looked at the row, the string running horizontally, and then the the column, the one running vertically. Now, the columns appearing on the left-hand side are the lead columns of the truth table. The lead columns of the truth table, the ones you see on the left-hand side, we consider them the lead tables or columns of the truth table. And these lead columns are determined by the number of statement variables that we have, the number of statement variables that we have in any given logical formula. And we'll talk about the statement variables, remember we said statement variables are placeholders for statements. So, if for instance, we have a particular formula with, let's say, three statement variables, that is, three different statements that have symbols representing them. The first one, remember we say statement variables always begin with small letters starting from P. We have three different statements, John is a boy, P, Jane is a girl, Q, and Alice is a girl. P, Q, R, then we have three different statement variables. This means we're going to have three lead columns. The P, Q, and R, they will constitute the lead columns of the truth table. So, from the logical constants in operators or connectives, truth tables can be constructed depending on the number of variables involved. That is what I've just explained. In the construction of truth tables, the number of columns depends on the number of variables involved. If there are two variables, the lead columns will be two. If three, the lead columns, three, and so on. If for instance, we have two variables, P and Q, the number of columns will be two. A third column will be the solution to the problem depending on the logical constant involved. So, when you have your lead tables, you are using the lead tables now to solve whatever problem that you have. So, the columns that will come after the lead tables, they are there to help you provide solution to the problem that you have. Now, from the number of rules, for the number of rules, the formula is 2 raised to power n, where n represents the number of variables, the number of statement variables, that is what I'm saying, 2 raised to power n, where n represents the number of variables. For two variables, P and Q, the number of rules will be 2 raised to power 2, because we have two statement variables, 2 raised to power 2. And 2 raised to power 2 is the same as saying 2 times 2, 2 times 2 is equal to 4. It means we're going to have four rules. The next thing after the rules is how to arrange the Ts and the Fs in the lead columns. Remember, whatever we are doing here, we are looking, it falls within the realm of two-value logic. Two-value logic will only have truth and false as the values that we have. So, in the rules we have provided, we are going to alternate the Ts and the Fs, and that is what we're going to do now. So, we begin by filling the first lead table with alternates Ts and Fs to the last row. That is what we are going to do, the first row, on the first row to the last row, we're going to fill Ts and Fs. In the second lead table, you will double the Ts and Fs to the last row. After doing that, you will begin to apply the rules of the operators involved to provide the truth tables for third column, which is the solution. The truth tables for each logical constant with two variables, P and Q, will be provided except for negation, that will involve only one variable, P. Remember, we said that the logical operator, the logical operator for negation is unary, unary because it works based on a single statement. So, that's why you have that exception there. But for the other ones that we consider as connected, which are binary, they must always operate with two statements. Now, we look at the rules for assigning truth values to logical operators and connectives. We have already done that before in our previous study session. So, we're going to look at some of them, yeah, again, just to refresh our minds, what are the rules? We begin with negation. The negation of any true statement is false, and the negation of any false statement is true. So, in other words, any statement, any time a statement is negative, the truth value of that statement changes. If it is true, it will become false when negated. If the statement is false, it will become true when negated, that is just what I'm trying to say. Now, how about the conjunction? The rule stipulates that the only condition where a conjunction can be true is only when both of its conjuncts are true, both of its conjuncts. Conjuncts are the two different statements that are joined together or joined by the connective called conjunction. So, once the two conjuncts are true, that is the only condition under which it can be considered as true. Otherwise, in any other instance, it is considered as false. In other words, if you have two statements, true, true, the answer is going to be true. But you have true and false, it's going to be false. If you have false and false, it's going to be false. Now, disjunction, the rule for disjunction states that for an inclusive disjunction, it is true if and only if at least one of the disjuncts is true. For the disjunction, once one of the disjuncts, the disjuncts are the two different statements that are joined by a disjunction. So, once one of them is true, then it can be considered as true. So, in this situation where you have true, true, it is going to give you true. You have truth, false, it's going to give you true. You have false, true, it's going to give you true. The only instance where it's going to be false is when both disjuncts are false. And here you have false, false, that is what make it to be false. How about the conditional statement? The rule for a conditional statement states that a conditional statement is true whenever both the antecedent and the consequent have the same truth value. Otherwise, the true value is determined by the value of the consequent. That is, where the antecedent and the consequent have different truth values. Now, this may look a little bit complex. What this particular rule is saying is this. The only instance where a conditional statement can be considered as false is when the antecedent, that is the first statement, is true and the consequent, which is the second statement, is false. That is the only instance that it can be considered as being false. Otherwise, in all other instances, it is considered as what, true. So, in this situation where you have the conditional statement, you have truth, truth is going to be true. If you have false, true is going to be true. If you have false, false is going to be true. But where you have truth and false, that is where it is going to be false. That is what that particular rule is saying. Then, the last one is the bi-conditional. The rule for a bi-conditional stipulates that a bi-conditional is true only when both components have the same truth value. Otherwise, it is false, that is, whenever the two have opposite truth values. What this one is saying is this, that a bi-conditional statement is only true when the two statements that are joined by the bi-conditional have the same truth value. That is, it could be true, true, or false, false. But any time you have opposite values, that is, maybe true and false, or false and true, it's going to be false. So, for any bi-conditional to be true, the two statements must have the same truth value. That is, it may either be true, true, or be false, false. That is it about the rule governing the logical operator. So, as you can see, we have provided here a list of different logical operators here for you to see, so that at least you are familiar with them. Remember, our focus will be more on the five major ones that we've taught you or expose you to at these particular stages. Those are the symbols, their names, and the definition. The definition will tell you when it's going to be true and when it's going to be false. So, we have there the conjunction, we have disjunction, we have negation, conditional statement, which is also called material implication, bi-conditional statement, which is also material equivalence. So, you have to be familiar with all these symbols, all these operators, so that anywhere you see them, you know what they mean. You see their symbols for the conjunction. There is a mix up here, this is supposed to be up here. This, this, the, what you have here on the second one here is supposed to be for conjunction. All of these are supposed to move up, this is for conjunction. Then, this one is for disjunction. The one hanging under here is for disjunction, those are the symbols. Any of the, any of those three symbols can represent a disjunction. Then, we have here the not, this is sheet in this table. Here, this is for the not, then this is for the conditional statement. And then, this one here, these three, these three horizontal lines are for bi-conditional statement. So, can I make this more clear? So, as already been said, some other logical symbols exist, but they are both listed as the most commonly used ones. But our focus is more on the five we've introduced you to. Note that the truth value of a statement is true if it is true and false, and if it is false. That is just for clarity sake. So, here are some examples for us to look at here in terms of the application of the logical symbols we have already looked at. Let us look at example one. Consider the following statements, 1 by is in natural state, then 4 is an even number. 1 by is in natural state, then 4 is an odd number. 1 by is in natural state, then 4 is an even number. 1 by is in reverse state, then 4 is an odd number. We shall use this example to demonstrate the connectives and/or and not. Look at the table there. The table there displays how these, the rules governing the logical operators could be applied to the examples we have already noted there. The first one that you see there, you know, after the lead column, remember, we have P and Q. Those ones will provide for us the lead columns. The first solution there is P and Q, that is for conjunction. The second one there is P, disjunction, Q, or Q, that is P or Q, that is for disjunction. And then, this is supposed to be for negation. The symbol didn't come out well. Negation, and here too we have negation. So, this is it, the lead column, we have filled the lead column, look at them here. The lead columns filled up already, true, false, true, false, then true, true, false, false. You may want to know how we arrive at these values of Ts and Fs that we have here. Now, given the formula that we have already given in our discussion, 2 raised to power n. If you have two statement variables, for instance, in these two, this instance, we have here P and Q, you have two statement variables, it will be 2 raised to power 2. 2 raised to power 2 is 2 times 2, which is equal to 4. Now, in order to fill the first lead column, we are going to divide 4 by 2. When we divide 4 by 2, we are going to have 2. That is to say, we are going to fill in the values of Ts twice and the values of Fs twice. That is 2 to each, and that's why we have truth, true, and false, false. Now, we are left with 2, we move to the next column, which is Q. We want to divide the 2 by, the 2 that is left, by 2. We divided 2 by, that is left by 2, we are going to have 1. So, it means we are going to alternate 1 T and 1 F until we fill the entire columns. And that's why I have truth, false, true, false. Now, the rule of a conjunction, the rule of conjunction says a conjunction is true only when both conjuncts are what, true. So, let us solve it, listen, this column here, this is the column for the conjunction. So, here we have truth, and here we have truth, the answer is going to be true. Here we have truth, and here we have false, it's going to be false. Because we have already said that the rule governing a conjunction says for it to be true, both conjuncts, P and Q, must be true. So, this one is true, and this one is false, so it's going to be false. This one is false, and this one is true, it's going to be false. This one is false, and this one is false, it's also going to be false. That is it for the conjunction. Now, we'll move to the disjunction. What is the rule governing the disjunction? The rule governing the disjunction says a disjunction is true when at least one of the disjuncts is true. Which means if you take the values of P and Q, any instance where you have T, whether it is under P or whether it is under Q, the answer is going to be true. And here we have, we'll begin with this, the first row, here we have true, and here we have true, the answer is going to be true. Here we have true, here we have false, the answer is going to be true. Here we have false, and here we have true, the answer is going to be true. But here we have false, and here we have false, the answer is going to be false. Because there is no true in the middle of them, and that's why it's false. That is it about disjunction. Now, we come to negation. I would say, a statement is negative when not is inserted in it. And once that not is inserted, it is going to change the truth value of that statement. So, using the column P, we are negating P. If we are negating P, this is all we're going to have. If it is not true, it is going to be what, false, and that's why we have false. If it is not true, it's going to be what, false. If it is not false, it's going to be what, true. If it is not false, it's going to be what, true. Now, the same thing can be applied to the column of Q when it is negated. Here, you have true, if it is not true, it's going to be what, false. If it is not false, it's going to be what, true. If it is not true, it's going to be what, false. If it is not false, it's going to be what, true. So, that is how to apply the rules governing the logical operators to construct truth tables. These are, here are more examples. This is the example for conjunction, disjunction, negation, negation. Here, negation is facing this conjunction here, this conjunction here, we have here not P. And here we have here, this is it. So, when you apply the rules governing each of the logical operators in solving a problem, you arrive at the answer as you have there on the screen. There's also the second example there, this is using truth values of the statements in the example above, show that the following compound statements are equivalent. P or Q, show that P or Q is equivalent to not in bracket, not P and not Q. Number two, show that not in bracket, P and Q is equivalent to not P or not Q. And then, the C one is, show that not in bracket, not P is equivalent to P. So, as you can see, what we have here, we are going to use, we are going to have two lead tables. And that's how we have here P, Q. So, we're going to fill in the values of Ts and Fs, just the way we did in the earlier example. And remember, first of all, it is clear here that we have two statement variables. We apply our formula, 2 raised to power 2, which is 2 times 4. It means we are going to have four rules, that's how we have 1, 2, 3, 4. Then, how do we alternate the values of Ts and Fs? That is, we divide 4 by 2. When we divide 4 by 2, for the first one, which is P, we're going to have 2 Ts here and 2 Fs. Then, the remaining 2 that is left, we divide by 2, we're going to have 1. When we divide by 1, it means we are going to alternate Ts and Fs. So, we have true, false, true, false, we have filled our lead column. Then, I want to use the lead columns to solve this problem. While you're doing that, first and foremost, you may need to apply the Bortmas rule. You have to create a bracket so that you are able to attend to what is outside. Please, note that these boxes you see here, they represent negation, they represent negation, they represent negation. So, we have here not in bracket, not P and not Q. So, you should, first and foremost, you must know the value of not P, know the value of not Q. So that by then you know their values, you use their column now to find the solution for not P and not Q. So, the first one here will begin with not P, look at it here, not P. All these ones have been provided for combing in, so that when you want to pick any of them, you can quickly know the column you are picking. This is for P or Q. What is the rule? It is true whenever one of the disjuncts is true. So, we have here true, true, it's going to be true. True, false, it's going to be true. False, true, it's going to be true. False, false, it's going to be false. Then, here for the conjunction, P and Q, it is only true when both of the conjuncts are true. True, true is true. True, false will be false. False, true will be false. False, false will be false. Now, not P, the truth value will change. Not, if it is not true, it's going to be false. If it is not true, it's going to be false. If it is not false, it's going to be true. If it is not false, it's going to be true. Now, not Q, if it is not true, it's going to be false. If it is not false, it's going to be true. This is supposed to be true. Something is wrong here, this is supposed to be true. And if it is not, if it is not true, it's going to be false. If it is not false, it's going to be true. So, if you want to look for the value of not P and Q, you'll come here. The only thing you need to do is to negate, the only thing you need to do is to negate what you have here. So, if it is not true, it's going to be false. If it is not false, it's going to be true. If it is not false, it's going to be true. If it is not false, it's going to be true. So, if you are looking for the value of not P or not Q, so you come here, this is not P, and this is not Q. Q, I would say for the disjunction, only one of the Ts is a not to make it true. So, we have here a false, false, it's going to be false. Remember that here is true. So, false, true will give us true. True, false will give us true. True, true will give us true. That is the solution for that one. Then, we'll come through not in bracket, not P and not Q. So, not P and not Q, look at it here. We have to find the, first of all, the value of not P and not Q, look at it. Not P and not Q. So, the value of not P, not P, not P and not Q. We use this true, not P and not Q, first and foremost. If you hear, if I have here a false and false, what you are going to have here will be false. It will be false, and if you say it is not false, it's going to be true. Here, false and true will also be false. But because we have not here outside, if it is not false, it's going to be true. We'll come here again, truth and false will also be false. And if you say it's not false, it's going to be true. Then, we have here true, truth and true, this one is going to be true. And because it is not true, it's going to be what, false. We fill that one. Then, not, not P, it means you need to negate this one, what you have here. So, if it is not false, it's going to be true. If it is not false, it's going to be true. If it is not true, it's going to be false. And if it is not true, it's going to be false. That is the solution to that particular problem. Now, these are more examples using the bi-conditioning. So, we have something like, we have something like this. Let B, let P, the statement, P is for the statement, the interior angles of a polygon are equal. And Q, the statement, for the statement, the polygon is regular. It's more like saying the interior angles of the polygon are equal if and only if the polygon is regular. So, if we are using the bi-conditional rule, we know that we have two statement variables there. Two statement variables, P and Q. Look at the lead tables here, we have filled the values. Now, we apply the rule, remember we said that for a bi-conditional to be true, both Now we apply the rule, remember we said that for a bi-conditional to be true, both. Of the statements must have the same truth value. That is true, true or false, false for it to be true, otherwise it's going to be false. So here we have true and true, it's going to be true. Here we have true and false, it's going to be false. Here we have false and true, it's going to be false. Here we have false and false, it's going to be true. We have more example, now this example involves a conditional statement, conditional statement. So let's assume we have also two statements, variables. So we have P and Q, see how the lead tables are already filled. Just the same way we did the other one. So if we are looking for P conditional Q, the rule says, the conditional statement is only. False when the antecedent is true and the consequent false. In all other instances, it's going to be true. So let us apply the rule. Here we have truth and here we have true, it's going to be true. Here we have truth and here we have false. This is the instance where it will be false, so it's going to be false. Here we have false and here we have true, it's going to be true. Here we have false and here we have false, it's going to be true. Now if we turn it the other way around and say, Q conditional P. So we are moving this way, Q will become the antecedent. From this one, Q is the antecedent and P is the consequent. So we say, truth, truth will give us true. False, true will give us true. Truth, false, the only instance is going to be false. Then we have here, false, false, what is going to give us all? True. Then, we say, okay, let us convert these two statements now to bi-conditional. So P and Q, we are using the operator bi-conditional to solve the problem. So when you have, bi-conditional rule says, they must have the same truth value, either true, true or false, false. So here we have, truth, truth is going to give us true. Truth, false is going to give us false. False, true is going to give us false. But false, false is going to give us true. Those are the examples. We have other ones, tautology and contradiction. When we say a particular logical formula is a tautology, all I'm trying to say is. By then, we construct our truth table, I want to discover that our solution is going to have Ts all true. When you see Ts all true, that is a tautology. Then, when you see Fs all true, that is a contradiction. For any logical solution to be a tautology, the values. The entire column must be true, Ts, you see only Ts. And then, for any logical solution to be considered as a contradiction. The values, the entire column must be false. And that is why we have here, see, this is a con- a tautology. Truth, 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 true, true is Ts all true. Then here is a contradiction because we have here a false, 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 all true. All true. So these are the examples we have been giving here. And the first one here, you have here P or Q. Then the second one, P and Q. Using the lead tables here, we can solve this P or Q. P, this is a disjunction. And we say the rule is, at least one of the disjuncts must be true. So we have here truth, truth is going to be true. Truth, false will be true. False, true will be true. False, false is going to be what? False. Then for a conjunction, and, uh, both of the conjunctions must be true for it to be true, otherwise it is false. So we have here true, true will be true. Truth, false will be false. False, true will be false. But then F, a false, false is going to give us false. So now, if we. We use a conditional to bind these two different statements. P or Q. If P or Q, then P and Q, as we have here. This is the solution we are going to have. We'll use these two columns, this column and this one, to find a solution for this. And the rule we are going to apply is that of a conditional statement. What does the rule governing a conditional statement say? It says that a conditional statement is only false when the antecedent, that's the first statement. Is true and the consequent, which is the second statement, is false. Otherwise, it is true, means in all other instances, it's going to be true. So here, we have here truth, truth is going to be true. Truth. False, there's a problem here, truth, false, this is supposed to be false because this. Yeah, 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 no, wait. This is it, there's a mix up here. The thing is, there's a switch here, where we were placed, we have placed the antecedent and the consequent wrongly. So let's go by it again, look at it here. This one is P. And Q. Then. P or Q, it means this, this is supposed to be our antecedent. Look at it here. And then this one is supposed to be our consequent, look at it here. So we are going to operate from here to here, not from here to here as we tried earlier. That was why there was an issue that we had to check again and then go back to the right thing. So we are using, we start from here to here and then we'll find a solution for here. Are we together? So now let's go. So using our rule, as I've already stated, this is true, this is true, it's going to be what? True. This is false and this is true, it's going to be what? True. This is false and this is true, it's going to be what? True. This is false and this is false, it's going to be true. So because the entire column is filled up with Ts, it means that it is a tautology. And that is why we have these Ts here. Now we'll go to a contradiction. For contradiction, we say the values must what? False. So what we are going to be operating with here, we look for, where we have P. And Q, this is P and Q. Then. We look for not P, it means we just have to negate what we have here. Then we combine that using the disjunction, this, no, this, uh, using, using a conjunction. This is the symbol of a conjunction. So do not forget that here, what we are going to be using is. The negation of this, so the negation of this will be false. The negation of this will be false, the negation of this will be true, the negation of this will be true. So if we use. This against this, we're going to find the answer for this. So we are saying, here having negated this one. At least we know at this level that if we negate P, T, if we negate T, it's going to be false, false, true, true. So remember, we're working with false, false, true, true. Since we don't have any column here where the negation could be clearly put. So at least, have it at the back of your mind that we are working with the negated P. So all of this, there will be false for us, false for us, and here will be true and true for us. So we have here, we're working with this column and then. We combine that with the negated values of P. So we have here. Truth. False. Truth. Truth. Truth, false. Is going to be false, remember we said for a conjunction, for it to be true, both of the conjunctions must have to be true. So this is true and this is false, so it's going to be false. This is false. And this is false, so it's going to be, sorry, it's going to be false. This is false and this is true, it's going to be false. This is false and this is true, it's going to be false. And that is why we have the string of Fs here. Meaning that it is a word contradiction. F, F, F. So look at, here, we have decided to summarize this whole session by providing two tables to represent each of the logical operators. Here, we are working with a single statement variable, so that's why we have only P. And P here, for us, it means it's going to be, hmm, two raised to power one, two raised to power one, one is what? Two. So for us to see they have the value of two, this is true value logic, by dividing two by two. If we divide two by two, the answer is going to be one. So we have here truth and false. So here, if it is not true, it's false, if not false, it's true. That is it for negation, then it comes to conjunction. Hmm? Conjunction, where P is true, remember the rule says, at least both of the conjunctions must be true for it to be true. So where P is true and Q is true, the answer is true. Where P is true and Q is false, it's going to be false. Where P is false and Q is true, it's going to be false. And where P is false and Q is false, it's going to be false. And see there, hmm, see the table there? Then, disjunction, we say, at least one of the disjuncts has to be true. So here, where P is true and Q is true, it is true. Where P is true and Q is false, it is true. Where P is false and Q is true, it is true. Where P is false and Q is false, it's certainly going to be false because we have no instance where there is a, the, there is a T there. Look at it there, represented, then we'll come to conditional statement, and we'll say, conditional statement is only false when the antecedent is true. And the consequent is what? False, and all other instances, it's going to be true. So where P is true and Q is true, it's going to be true. Where P is true and Q is false, it's going to be false. Where P is false and Q is true, it's going to be what? True. That is the table there. And the last but not this is the bi-conditional. And we said, it is only true when both of the statements are true. Or, sorry, when both statements have the same truth value. Whether true, true or false, false, in all. In other instances, it's going to be false. So we have here where P is true and Q is true, it's going to be true. Where P is true and Q is false, it's going to be false. Where P is false and Q is true, it's going to be what? False. And where P is false and Q is false, it's going to be true. Look at it, represented there. Hmm? These are the simple statements, you can solve this from the examples we have already attended to. So at the end of this study session, we have learned that a truth table is a graphic representation of an operator and its definition in terms of its truth value. And there are important steps in the construction of truth tables. First and foremost, you must know the number of statement variables. Hmm? It is good for you to be aware of the number of statement variables. That will help you to create your lead tables, your lead columns. Uh? So when you have two statement variables, you are going to have two lead columns. Where you have three, three lead columns. P, Q, and R, where you have four, we're going to have four lead columns, P, Q, R, S. We fill them up and for you to know the number of rows, you apply the formula, two raised to power n, where n refers to the number of statement variables. So if you have two statement variables, it's going to be two raised to power two, which is two times, so. If you have three statement variables, it's going to be two raised to power three, which is two times two times two. Two times two is four, four times two is going to be eight. If it is four, we're going to have two raised to power four, which is two times two times two times two. You fill all of that and then you construct a truth table based on the logical operator and truth. Thank you very much for your attention. See you in the next study session.